Last meeting Terry and Steve had presented a supplemental agreement on changing their contract because the contract we have now will just automatically renew. And so they were looking for an extension of the number of years. I think our response was, what do we get for that? Terry prepared an agreement that reflected what they can give us. And I don't want to put words in Terry's mouth or Steve's mouth, so come on up and talk about it. We did put a ordinance on for approval of it for first reading tonight. So should you choose to act on it as either amended or as it sits and to later be amended, we can do that, but our decision tonight won't be final.
Okay, thank you. What the changes that I made to present to you was, some of the topics that we talked about was, we were gonna, we changed it to reflect less than a 2.8 percent increase for the next couple of years. We, I'll wait till Teddy gets here. Booty mouth, Teddy. Get out of here. Got your chair. So, on 5.1, if you have a copy of it there by any chance, what I added was, the base compensation for this next year would be reflecting an increase of 2.75 percent. And then, the next year, I added the language that said it shall not exceed the 2.8 percent. So, that's, that's holding two years down at less than the 2.8 percent increase as you guys had asked for.
That 2.75 isn't found in the memorandum?
No, it's just in the dollar amount.
It's the difference between the current payment and the dollar amount that's reflected in the memorandum.
It's just an automatic dollar amount so that it would be voted on. So then, the other, the other change was, changing it from automatically renewing for the terms that it was, to adding in the seven years. I emailed this, I have my copy.
It's attached to the ordinance portion of your agenda.
It's attached to bill number 3989.
It's in the back of the package.
It's the second one from the back.
Good job, Rick. Should be the next page. Very good. So I think, I think that that had what you wanted to address in it. We can make any adjustments, talk about any adjustments.
Comments by any of the board?
I'm in favor of the seven year contract. If either party decided it turned bad, either party can get out of it.
Yeah, nothing else in the contract's changed.
The ability to enter into a long-term contract, in my opinion, has benefits for the vendor and for the customer. Benefits for the customer are we're getting some guaranteed pricing for a long term. A lot of things can happen. That's good for us. The benefit for the vendor is, they can focus their business on us and not have to be concerned with what's going to happen next month or next year quite so frequently. And it gives their employees peace of mind that they have, you know, their job here in St. Genevieve. So as far as I'm concerned, I like it. That's all I'm certain.
Anyone else?
Yes. Well, I think so far, I thought four-year contract is working fine. So, what is the benefits to the city to go seven years?
They lowered that percentage.
Says this month.
And plus what you just said.
Okay, did I miss something?
It was three, and they've changed it to 2.8 when we increased it to seven years from four.
This year's below 2.8, it's 2.7.
Next year will be less than 2.8.
Oh, no, but they're not going to guarantee seven years.
Not exceed 2.8. And in the current contract, it says it will be in between three and here, if we can't agree. We're saying that no matter what, this year's going to be the 2.75 and next year is guaranteed not to be more than 2.8.
And I heard what Tom said as far as, you know, we're locked in at the same price for seven years. Well, that could be good or bad, depending on what happens.
Well, and again, remember this, the contract language says, next year will not exceed 2.8. That does not mean it will be 2.8, it will not exceed it. And then the years after that, it's three to whatever it was, if we don't agree. I don't think we've ever took a 3 percent. We've always come in less. And so, that language is, is, is to protect both. If the, you know, we can't, no matter what happens, we can't go over this if we don't agree, because there might be a time that something happens and the city says, hey, we need this and this, and something expands, and we got to add 10 people, and so then, we have to agree on this. But if we don't agree, if we, if we ever come to a point that our relationship isn't agreeable, then we've got the language that says it won't exceed, it won't be less than this, and it won't be more than this. We can always agree on less, if we need to.
So with the four-year contract, why would it be 2.?
I didn't, I didn't talk to my boss.
If we stay with the same contract, the four-year contract, the increase would be what percent?
Well, most of our increases this year, that I've been, we've been looking at, are 3.5 to 5 percent in our divisions. With 20, the supplies and materials, we've seen about a 22 percent increase in the last couple of years.
So what does the contract say?
Oh, this year, we're asking for 2.75.
Contract says that, that it will never be less than three. It's whatever you agree on above three, and if you don't agree, you default to a federal standard cost of living. It could be anything.
You're proposing 2.8.
Next year's going to be less than 2.8.
Okay, so that's a concession for asking us to accept the seven-year contract.
To give us the seven, the extra time on the extension, that's what that was for. And so, like I said, every contract's a little different based off of what's taking place. But this is the, this is a low increase that we're asking for, if this was in another location. This is, this gets us where we need to be at St. Genevieve to keep things the way they are for improvement.
I think, I think they like being here, and I personally like having them here, because this, this thing has just done nothing but improve since you guys took it over, both water and soil.
I think there's value to the peace of mind.
Yes, I agree.
To expand on what you said, I look at it this way. I mean, if you guys, if we sign this contract, and you guys know you're going to be here seven years, and let's say something comes up this year or next year, and you guys look at it and say, hey, we're going to be there seven years, and let's just go ahead and do this, because we're going to, you guys as a company are going to benefit for the next seven years by doing it now, and it may or may not be a cost to the city, but it helps you guys out in the long run. You're more apt to make that decision for the betterment of your company, because you know you're going to be here seven years. The only problem I got with it is, it's only seven years. I'd like to see 10, but, you know, that's not what we're talking about.
Right. If the general consensus of the board would be that, I will change that for the next reading.
Take seven.
Yeah, I'm fine with seven.
I looked at the big picture, and if you know you're going to be here, you're more apt to do more now, because it's going to benefit you in the long run.
Well, we really appreciate being in St. Genevieve, and we, we like the relationship, we like the progress. I mean, I see where it was, I see where it is, and I, and I have a vision for the future to do what the board wants, and I think we work well together. This is something that we're just requesting.
I just look at what you've done in a relatively short time, and, you know, who knows what the future holds and how much better it's going to be then, so I mean, I...
You also look at it from a more, like, personal standpoint as far as your employees go. They have that peace of mind that you've got this contract for seven years, they can plan their life, they can buy a house, or have a kid, or whatever, you know, but if you've got the contract for three or four, they might say, I don't know, should I buy a house in St. Genevieve or not? How long am I going to be there? And I just think that longer amount of time is going to allow your employees to say, I'm here, I'm going to really work harder for this company, and, you know, and that benefits St. Genevieve.
You hit the nail on the head for one of my primary reasons, is if you look at the age of some people, and the fact that people are going to be retiring, and we're going to have to be training and bringing in new people within the next two to three years or so.
You don't want to say, oh, our contract's only another year.
Thank you. I mean, that, that is a piece of, you know, when you're recruiting and bringing in staff that have to, as we require them to be in the communities and do things, something has to be attractive for this.
If you recruit a staff member who knows they're going to have a steady job, they buy a house in St. Jen, they buy their groceries in St. Jen, they send their kids to school here, I mean, that's a no-brainer. Yeah.
That's a good point.
Well, how many people on this board are still...
The woman's perspective of the personal feeling thing here.
We need that.
Joe had a good point to go on 10 years, but how many of us are going to still be on the board in seven years? We're handcuffed in the next...
If we go beyond seven, I want more years guaranteed, and I don't think there's...
That's a good opportunity to lock something in. I have no problem with the seven-year.
Well, it is, in 107 years, you've got 90 days.
There's all the other languages still on...
If they decide they don't want it, we're not here, that's their choice.
We don't want to be any place that we're not one. It's a relationship, you know, and it works when it's a relationship. I don't think anybody on this board, you know, on one hand feels that the employees are not yours. On one hand, they're not, we've got some rules we have to follow for privacy, but I'm comfortable with knowing that if anybody has a problem, it gets addressed, you know, and it works. I mean, that's why we've been in places for 20 to 30 years.
You know, I called Steve the other morning, 6:30 in the morning, somebody called me and said, I see water gushing out, you know, somewhere in town. Who do I call? Well, City Hall's not open yet, so I called Steve's cell phone, and he's on it, and, you know, and I mean, I know the other city departments do that too, but that's...
And another thing, the other night, when we talked about this the first time, we talked about notification and all that stuff. Well, since then, there was another break on St. Mary's Road. Steven already implemented contacting us to let us know, I don't know if any of you got a call, but since it was in my word, he called me, and I'm like, we just talked about that the other night, and you guys already implemented a notification for it. So I'm like, the proactive steps you guys take, I just like it, I mean...
Well, you're ready to help our city, other staff, in the event of an emergency, some kind of blood or snow.
Snow removal.
Yeah, all that, that means a lot too.
What's that, Martin? I will wait for that.
Oh, it's got a project for you, you're going to find out about later.
I don't think we've refused many yet.
There you go. Anything else on the board on this topic?
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Moving on to the proposed changes for recreational cars. Martin, you got, we got that here somewhere.
Does that rain?
I was wondering.
On that side of the building, but not...
I know, I don't see anything out there.
I know, I see it.
Okay, we had a couple of issues several months ago. People were doing what they thought was recreational burning in their, in their yards, and we got calls from neighbors and didn't think that was right, and we looked at the ordinance, and the only thing we had in there was for open fires, open flames. And, and that was generally for brush and yards. It really didn't address any standards for people who want to build a fire ring or a fire pit, and sit around it and have a beverage and enjoy the evening. So you directed me to do the research, I did the research, lots of information out there from communities who have addressed this issue, and I drafted a pretty simple set of regulations that would fit into our code to address it in a safe manner. You can get really elaborate with these things, but I didn't think we wanted to do that.
Is this any different than the one we received before?
No.
When did you receive it before?
It's the same thing. We just had to discuss it, we just distributed it to you.
The same thing. So, the question is, having had a chance to review it, and we now have a chance to discuss it, whether there's anything about it you want to ask or change, or drop it all together if you want to.
Did you run this by Mick and see if he was okay with it?
No. No.
I mean, I would want his input on it.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that I received, no fire pit proposal in 25 feet below the structure. I don't see that the goal is to have our police department patrolling people's backyards to see how far away the commercial fire pit is from their house. If it's on their deck, that's, that's between them and their insurance company, but it's important that that is in there, but I think that would be the only thing people would say, what the heck? What's that all about? Well, the goal is not to police people using commercial fire pits, the goal is to prevent large bonfires and things that get out of hand and affect the neighbors. So, that's the only comment I have on it, I like it as written.
No magic to 25 feet?
Yeah.
It's got, actually, that's about the, the law of ordinances that I looked at and standards. This is the closest anybody has to a structure.
And that's just, I mean, something like that, that's not really something that would happen in a forest, but if, let's say, I have one in my backyard and I'm doing whatever, and a neighbor calls to complain, usually stuff like that only comes into play to mitigate the complaint. The police officer is going to say, well, yeah, you have the right to burn, but you're not doing it correctly, and they can use it at that point. It's not that they're going to go around and check when they see one, but if they have a complaint, that's, usually that stuff's in there, number one, to protect us from liability. If ours doesn't, isn't strict enough, you know, they can say, well, the city says we can do it within 10 feet, and it caused a fire at my house. You know, so they, they make it a little bit longer just to protect our wording or whatever, but I don't think that it's anything that they're just going to go check on and...
No, and we're not going to have the recreational fire police out.
But that doesn't, that haven't add out in there, if there is a problem, rather than say, well, you're being too noisy, well, you're not compliant, you're not within, or you're closer than 25 feet, it's just an easier way for them to control it. You know what I'm saying?
The most likely complaint in the ones, the only one we really received, had to do with the size of the fire and the smoke. And if you're not burning things that have obnoxious odors, plastics.
Is that what that one was? Was it not fire, was it not wood, or what?
It was treated.
Yeah, that'll set off an order.
My neighbors, their back patio is right, I mean, it's right against their house, but it's pretty good size, and they put a small, little bitty fire pit there, and that wouldn't be allowed according to this, but it's completely safe, concrete walls, concrete floor, concrete...
What about it, would exclude it? Is it a location issue?
Yeah, it's real, it's close, you're saying.
Yeah, it's closer than 25 feet, but it's within a concrete, I mean, there's concrete all around it, walls, everything. It's a brick house. I don't know, I mean, I know why it's in there, but I don't, I think that's a little smart.
There's no magic, like I said.
Now, would that restrict, like, if one of the schools wanted to have a bonfire?
That's different, that's an open burning issue.
Right, just get a permit.
Yeah. I think this is fine.
Yeah. Tom, did you say something about the deck all ago? Somebody's deck?
Yeah.
Did I miss something? What did you say about that?
No, I said, if somebody has a commercial fire pit on their deck, where our police officers aren't going to be instructed to go out and check everybody's backyard to make sure that's not happening.
Well, it says here, and you see there, are closer than 10 feet from any wooden fence, deck, or combustible materials, so you can't have it on the deck.
That's right, but what I'm saying is, our goal is not to have the police department go and check in people's backyard decks to see if they're doing that. That's not the goal. The goal is to prevent fires that can get out of hand, burning construction debris and pallets and big loom piles and calling it a, you know, recreational fire, when really they're just trying to burn their trash off.
Yep. You know, manufacturers recommend that you don't have a barbecue pit on your deck, but everybody does it.
So are we going to vote on this tonight?
It's on the agenda for first reading tonight.
It's not.
Oh, it's not? We're not going to vote on it tonight?
Yeah, yeah.
It will be on the agenda for first reading at your next meeting.
We can do that. That's okay. Anybody else got any comments about this?
No, I think it's fine.
Okay.
All right, you don't have any for the next 25 minutes?
What about your other business?
I don't have any for them. Bring up some...
You guys, got anything to bring up?
Golf cart deal. What's the deal with the golf cart deal?
We have, we can talk about that now or later. Where does this come from? Why is this even in front of us?
Well, we, we have a golf cart ordinance through the ADA of American Disabilities, Disability Act, that we're getting in line as far as what the city can do and what people can do. One thing is, is more addressed at handicapped people, but as far as getting around and being more mobile. The ADA says that we have just as much rights as anybody else in this community to go places. And they put in like other power-driven mobility devices and golf carts and electric wheelchairs are part of that, that these people can use to be more mobile.
I thought we had this already.
So how, are we out of compliance now, by not having some order that's saying they can do this?
Well, I don't know, and we're really out of clients per se, is that I think there should be more restriction as far as helping them as far as crossing roads and giving some guidelines as far as, you know, in...
We're, we're on our own, it doesn't say anything about that. Am I missing something?
About what?
About helping them cross roads.
Well, that's, that's part of the deal, they're going to have to cross roads to go to places, if they want to go shopping, where are they going to go?
They can't cross the highway.
They can't.
That's, that's not what it says, right? What I just looked at, I looked at, what a highway...
Third paragraph, Dan.
St. Howard, I mean, Highway 6132, Route M.
That's if they're just a regular golf cart. Now, if they go under the UTV, which a UTV is also considered one of those vehicles, they can do that.
What type of UTV is restricted under 20 miles per hour? I'm, I'm not being mean, I'm just, what is the kind of vehicle it's at? It's not a side-by-side, it's not a four-wheeler, because they can all go more than 20 miles an hour. They go more than 20 miles an hour.
If they're restricted to go under 20, 20 miles an hour and under?
Is that, is that a mechanical restriction?
If they go, if they go over 20 miles an hour, can they do 25? Then it's, it's a low speed vehicle, which has a different...
I don't want side-by-sides running around all over. Is this just for handicapped people, or just for anybody?
It's for anybody.
I don't want side-by-sides running around on city streets.
Well, that's your choice.
But I mean, what's the advantage?
If you don't care, if you don't care that handicapped people have mobility...
I do care about handicapped people, and I want them to have mobility, but this seems to me just wide open to anybody. It doesn't say only people that meet this requirement are allowed to do this.
So we should allow handicapped people to do it, and not anybody else, or what?
Yeah.
Well, I think we're all the same, aren't we?
No.
Why not?
You just said so people with a disability can have access.
Right.
People without disability can have other types of access.
They could.
Motor vehicles, in particular.
They could?
Yes.
That's kind of like a handicap parking spot.
For everybody.
Yeah.
For everybody.
That, that doesn't make any sense.
Well, it kind of does, if you think about it. We're allowing handicapped people to drive a golf cart, why don't we allow other people?
Why would we allow other people? And I don't understand, this is, is this a golf cart deal, or is this really about people with disabilities?
It's about people with disabilities. I mean, did you read it?
I read it, I read it, read it, read it, and I thought about it hard this afternoon.
And I know you don't like golf carts, and I know you're against it and everything.
I am, and this just seems...
You can vote whenever you want.
And I will, but I mean, the questions are, this, this doesn't...
You just vote for your heart, what you think is right.
Well, no, that's fine.
They don't care, they have no compassion, vote that way.
Okay, I will, but when we talk about this, this is a lot more about golf carts than anything else.
I thought it was more like UTVs, golf carts, and everything is addressed, like electric wheelchair chairs are all three of them.
Do you want to count how many times golf carts is in here against wheelchairs?
Pardon me?
You want to count how many times golf carts are mentioned in this as opposed to wheelchairs?
I don't know, I didn't count it out.
Well, I haven't either, but I mean, I'm just looking...
I tried to book them together, you know, UTVs, golf carts, and electric wheelchairs.
Did you like this?
But I vote some of it, yes.
Well, you had to get it, didn't you have a model from somewhere, or not?
As far as the model for...
Well, a model ordinance that had some of this stuff in it that's...
Well, yeah, we have a original, we have an ordinance now on golf carts.
Right.
Which allows people to ride golf carts within the city. And that they could cross highways at designated areas. This kind of expands it and opens it up for people with problems as far as disability and physical handicap.
Is there an outcry of, we're currently holding people with...
I could have brought some people in at night.
Is there an outcry?
People have approached me about it, yes. Mostly, some senior people have approached me about it.
That they can't drive their car, but they can drive a golf cart?
They said they would rather drive a golf cart, given we had it.
That, not that they can't, they just rather.
It might be either way.
Do we have a decal system in place now for the golf cart ordinance that we have?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so we don't have to...
But we're going to change it. Because there are going to be two different decals.
Work with that with us.
I doubt that, that we change it, but...
What's the two different decal on this?
Well, one, you can have a neat certain specification, that a UTV can be driven over to Country Mart and other places.
How do you cross a highway?
They're going to have to go down the highway a little bit.
But my understanding, help me where I'm wrong here, I thought that they can't cross a highway.
Unless, UTVs are allowed, but not golf carts.
Well, number four on page four says that they can, as long as the posted speed limit is not more than 45 miles per hour.
Right, that's what the statute says.
So to go to Country Mart, I can't have a golf cart, I got to have a UTV?
Well, if a golf cart is properly outfitted, qualifies as a UTV.
I don't have any more questions. I'll be warm on the other one when we get there.
Okay, I'm looking more at the safety part of this, and anything that may be new as far as the safety regulations are concerned. I see way too many little kids riding around on scooters with their dads that do not have helmets on. Literally, like, a three-year-old without a helmet, and I know that's addressed in here. I see teenagers driving scooters around texting.
With two or three people hanging off of them.
Right. I specifically asked Teddy to put in here about cannot operate electronic devices while the vehicle's in motion. They're texting while they're driving a scooter.
I was being...
Does anybody else have a problem with that? I mean...
I tell you, I have a problem with that, and there's some things I certainly like about this. I don't like it all, there's too much globbed in here together. If we want to look at scooters and kids riding scooters, I think, I think we should look at that. I agree, and helmets, anybody that gets on two wheels doesn't put a helmet on, it's just not thinking good, but there has, there's some parental responsibility to that. And having that to be a law, I got no problem with that, at all. None of the scooter stuff do I have a problem with. I got a huge problem with all the golf cart and UTV stuff. I just, I don't like them being cobbled, globbed in here together, so to get, to take this, which I feel is important, I got to take all this other stuff, which I think is not important.
Which is called pork.
Yeah, well, that's what I... Yeah, well, that's what I was trying not to just outright say that. I mean, I'm not a politician. I think we're city managers, and so I don't like the idea of bundling all these things together. It's pretty easy to make separate ordinances, and I think we definitely need to address young people on two wheels.
For sure.
Teddy, on page four, down about under section one, C, a seatbelt for the driver and any child under ten years old and under one hundred pounds. Okay? Does the driver just have to have a seatbelt?
You know, that's what it says in the Missouri statute, that the driver, that's the requirement to have a UTV on the road, that the driver has to have a seatbelt. But you know, I looked at it again, and, you know, and I'm thinking about safety, and I looked it up, and most of the fatalities with a golf cart is the people falling out and hitting their head. But if I like them, I would propose that every person in that golf cart or UTV have a seatbelt.
My pickup, I drove across the Skeletor quarry last week. With me in it, weighs eighty-eight hundred pounds. At twenty miles an hour, if I had a minor impact with a vehicle that weighed less than eighteen hundred pounds, I don't want a golf cart actually weighs, that's not a fender bender in a car. That's, people could get killed at twenty miles an hour.
Well, that's what I'm concerned here with too, and even with the scooters. But if I'm sitting at a stoplight or a stop sign, and a golf cart or a UTV or whatever these are comes and tries to make that turn, and let's say they hit gravel and slide into my car, does that go on my uninsured motors? Or do they, I'd like to see them have to carry liability insurance.
Well, I think it's in there.
Well, it is on page five.
Section seven.
That's for the rentals, right?
But that, yeah, that's for the rentals.
That's for renting or leasing.
That's under section seven.
And I think if somebody came to the board and said, "Look, to promote tourism in St. Genevieve, I would like to set up shop at this address, I'm gonna have six golf carts. These are the added safety features that I'm gonna put on these six golf carts. I want to be able, for my customers, to ride them on these specific streets to reach our tourist attractions between the hours of this and this on these certain days," I would be all for that. If somebody wants, yeah, if somebody wants to reach out and make an attempt to make some money and help tourism, I think that's wonderful. But that's different than just UTV, side-by-sides, driving all over town.
Citywide, yeah.
I like seeing golf carts downtown. I think it's cute, I think it's great, I think it's a neat little tourist thing. It'd be great if somebody did a rental thing, whatever, but if somebody owns one and they wanna drive from their house in the historic district to a restaurant in the historic district, I think they should be able to do that.
And they currently they-
Their current ordinance allows it.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, people in cars are stupid sometimes. People in golf carts are stupid sometimes, and I-
I know how many near misses that I have in a month, and I'm thinking I'm paying attention, and I almost hit somebody, because I'm not paying as much attention as I should have. And the consequences in two full-size vehicles or small cars is, are gonna be less dangerous-
Less, obviously.
...than lightweight vehicles. I think the scooter thing is separate, I think it should be addressed and then, you know, rather quickly while there's still some summertime left, so we can get the handle on that.
Sometimes your main concern is that they're not safe being on the road, because they could get hit by a bigger vehicle.
One of my many concerns.
Okay, well, you know, we share the role with a lot of things. We share the role with pedestrians, we share the role with bicycle people, scooters, slow-moving vehicles.
Absolutely.
You know, and it seems like we do get around these people without running over them.
I don't see why we need to add to that list of hazards.
I'd like to see a, I mean, as far as rental goes, it's not listed in there, I don't think.
If it came up, we could address it.
But, I mean, I just remember what it was like when I was younger, as soon as I got in a golf cart, running as fast as I can, as hard as I can, and try to tear it up, you know? I mean, that's just the way it was.
That's realism.
And I think that's exactly, I mean, the kids are doing it now on scooters, I mean-
And kids are gonna do it in cars, too. So is that gonna prevent us from letting an adult drive a car?
I don't want to see them turning Rocky Ridge. I mean, I just, I don't wanna see UTVs on our streets. I just, I'm a dead set against the whole golf cart thing, and other than for someone who would like to do it for tourism and have very specific restrictions, I think we have an ordinance on the books that allows golf carts, and I think that the scooters should be separate from being glommed together with this other stuff. But that's why we're, that's why there's an eight-member board, you know, is to vote on these things. And disagreeing is healthy. It's a good thing to disagree. And I mean, there's a lot of times when I, you know, I never even thought about some of the points that you brought up earlier about alliance. That was really important to me when you said that their employees could have comfort in making a home by decision here. I never even thought about it, that's a big deal to me. So I like to learn, if I think I'm right, the only way you're gonna change my mind is to prove me wrong. So disagreeing is-
Do you want me to bring some people that you can personally look at in the eyes and say, "I don't really care, I have no compassion for what you want to do for handicapped"?
Teddy, that's not fair.
Well, that's a terrible thing to say.
Well, that's what you're saying, when you were telling them, "Maybe you don't want them on there, you don't want these people out there, you don't want them to be mobile."
I don't want them riding golf carts or UTVs.
Okay, I mean, that-
But it sums it up.
The bigger public hazard.
But not just them, anybody.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna go against any regulations that the ADA has, none of us want to. But, I don't know, I just never in my life have heard a disabled person say, "Hey, if I could just ride in a golf cart to go to the grocery store, that would change my life." Maybe there are those people.
There is.
But if you can drive a golf cart, it's not reasonable to get in that argument. That's an unreasonable position to have. You want me to, you do that, and I'll get on Craigslist and I'll find ten people who have been disabled because they were riding golf carts to get by cars. That's a ridiculous argument.
Now, we got people in the community that would like to do it.
Well, right now, they can't. If it meets the guidelines, they can, correct?
What's the difference?
They cannot get on Highway 32 or Highway 61. They can cross them, they can't traverse them.
Well, this doesn't change that, though.
It just changes that if you equip your vehicle such that it qualifies as a UTV, now you may traverse those streets under the state statute.
What mechanic, how do you do that mechanically? You cut a rev limiter on a-
A what?
A rev limiter on, I mean, my buddy just saw a thousand cc side-by-side. I mean, does he cut a rev limiter so it won't go past twenty, so he can ride around in town and kick that off when he wants to go forward? I mean, I don't know how that works.
And what, the equipment?
Turn signals and all?
Yes.
They can, they hit their head on.
And it's required on a golf cart.
But it's gotta have it with it.
It has to have turn signals, it has to have-
They're so loud, too.
Right, that's what I'm saying. They're horribly loud.
Victory.
I think we need to separate, we need to stop, but we need to separate safety issues from vehicle, whatever you're gonna call them, issues. I think that's the first thing that we need to do. Because I, I don't know if that should be a part of the same ordinance.
As far as safety issues, as far as what? Somebody running over them, was it on the road?
Well, I think the safety issues need to be implemented for the current golf cart ordinance that we have, regardless of if we do any of this other new stuff. I think we need to implement these safety issues.
Well, the way our ordinance says now, it is restricted. And like Martin said, if the golf cart qualifies as an UTV, it's more mobile, it's not as restricted.
So I guess I don't understand why it wouldn't be able to go above twenty miles an hour on city streets.
If you go over twenty miles an hour, between twenty and twenty-five, it's considered by the federal government as a low-speed vehicle. You had to register, you had to license it.
What's the problem with that?
All different rules.
What's the problem with that?
The problem I have with the twenty miles an hour is the speed limit on Highway 61 through town is thirty-five. That's kind of a big difference. And forgive me, I don't know very much about UTVs or golf carts, so-
Should pass it.
With a semi-
I hope that-
Copy sixty-one.
Yeah, really good. Where they will only use it to maneuver a little bit to get someplace like McDonald's or Country Mart or something like that, where they can go out.
So the way our ordinance reads right now, you can give it, change to a UTV if it meets the guidelines?
No, only if this ordinance would allow that. Currently, a golf cart.
And all you need to UTV for is to cross the state roads right now, correct?
You can cross them.
And then ride down them-
You can't drive down them.
Right. You can only cross them if we pass this.
You can cross them now.
No, they can do that.
But if we pass this, they can turn off of Portis Street and drive up to the stoplight at Highway 32 and go north on 32 to go to Overly's. Or wherever city-
They could.
So we got golf carts on the highway.
Well, I mean, technically, if you get off on Portis, you can go to El Travers, but you can't go to McDonald's.
Right.
Cut through the main parking lot.
Not with the current law, with our current ordinance, you can't do that.
Cut through the parking lot, so.
It's gonna be an intersecting street to cross, which we don't have.
I'm sorry, I just don't see significant advantage to this.
I mean, really, it, I mean, our current ordinance, it's very limited. You can't cross sixty-one or-
And that was controversial to get that passed, right?
Hmm?
That was controversial to get that ordinance passed.
I'm not sure who was against it. I don't, I don't remember.
That might have only been in my mind, that it was controversial.
I can't remember if you voted for it or against it, I don't know.
I can't remember if I was even on the board, I doubt it.
Yeah, I think preceded your vote.
Because I don't think, I would've made a bigger statement than I'm making now.
Okay.
I don't think I could see differences.
Well, the big difference-
Teddy, maybe we need to change the speed limits out there, they're gonna start running them roads.
We can't do that.
No, but I'm just saying, though, that's, when them trucks or cars is running whatever, forty-five, and this gonna do twenty.
I'm just saying, none of them do thirty-five through there.
Huh?
None of them do the speed limit through there.
I don't know, I don't think we've lost too many people on scooters or bicycles or pedestrians so far, so.
Do you wanna take, do you wanna do a work session strictly for this?
I think we just did one.
Are we done with it?
I don't know what else.
I mean, I can say vote on it, and if you don't like it, vote against it.
There you go.
I like parts of it, but I don't like all of it. That's where I'm at on it.
Let's take a three, four-minute break here, we're-
Hey.
What?
Have the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have a roll call, please. Pam?
Mayor Brumacher, Alderman Padlo.
Here.
Alderman Couch.
Here.
Alderman John Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Hook.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion of approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Motion by Jill, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move to personal appearances. You got here just in time, Joe. You're up.
I was just like that.
Yeah?
I made a breather. Huh? I made a breather.
Thanks. I visited with Martin the other day, and we were-
Just give us your whole spiel about who you are and why you're here, your name, address. Well, we do need-
Criminal, criminal records.
Yeah. That's a long story. My name's Joe Rosier, lifelong resident of St. Genevieve. About eight months ago, after retiring from my previous position, I joined Valley Catholic in St. Genevieve Parish as their Director of Development and Strategic Planning. And so that is kind of an encompassing sort of position in dealing with a lot of areas of the school and parish, and I feel very fortunate to be back in St. Genevieve after traveling for twenty years. And one of the projects that is probably very interesting to you as a group is the project that is known as the Rosier Store, which is the building on the corner of Third and Merchant, and going through the renovation of that particular project. And I know you all were very involved and certainly appreciate the, you know, giving the stamp of approval to move forward. As we look at that project and we start using, you know, our planning process, I think it could be very interesting for you all, first of all, to take another tour of that, and so I would like to extend an invitation to walk through and to, and see the project and how it's emerging. I think, I think the vision of this has changed a bit. There was a time where the parish hall was going to be used as more as a banquet center and for weddings and things like that, not to compete with any other venues like the Knights of Columbus or the Elks, but really kind of creating their own identity and hopefully bringing some of that business to downtown St. Genevieve. And that vision is really coming, coming into play right now. But in addition to that, we have a dual, both floors, and we have a performing arts area and a gallery area, and so the vision has really kind of expanded. And I really think that when we sit down and explain the business model for this and what this could happen in downtown St. Genevieve, as I explained to somebody the other day who says that nothing is happening in St. Genevieve, and I said, "In the downtown area alone, there's about a three and a half, three-point-seven million dollar investment." And I've been around a long time, and I can't ever remember that sort of investment happening in the downtown area. Now, as, you know, there's no doubt about it that it's off the tax rolls because it's part of the, for a not-for-profit, and I understand that, you know, the city and the board, you know, you have bills to pay. And part of my conversations with Martin Toma was how excited we are because of the influence we think we're going to have with other businesses in the area. We plan on using local caterers, whether it's, you know, the new Audubon Restaurant, Station Two Cafe, Cero's, and so as we, as we look at that and we look at the bed and breakfast and the hotels, if we plan our business model and X amount of weddings per year and an average amount per wedding, there's a multiplier effect that is, when you kind of study this, it's between a three-point-five and a four-point-oh. So if you, if you bring a ten-thousand-dollar wedding into St. Genevieve, it really has an economic impact of between forty and fifty thousand. And that sounds like a lot, but when you really start thinking about it, it really isn't. You know, if you bring a wedding into downtown or a business meeting or some other, some other gathering, you know, it'll fill the B and Bs. It'll have, people will be, you know, having a beverage, and they'll go into restaurants in addition to, you know, enjoying the venue that is being created. So people of St. Genevieve, both locally and externally who have supported this, we feel very fortunate, and we're going to have a day of celebration and Thanksgiving in October. And that is one of the major reasons why I'm here today to ask for, is this the time to ask for that?
It's covered right now.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna do it.
So there's a five o'clock mass that we're, you know, going through, just a, an appreciation and celebration mass, and as people come out of mass, we would like to be able to block off the front of the church and maybe in front of the museum, but if that can't happen, and maybe in front of the museum, but if that can't happen, I understand. And we're going to have some tables and chairs and some soft music and, you know, cooking some hamburgers and just so, and people can walk into the new venue just to kind of get a, just a real initial glimpse of what's going on. But I think we have to sell, yeah, sit down and celebrate, you know, as a parish and as a community for what we've achieved. So it's kind of with great excitement we're doing this. I think that we would be, there's gonna be no alcoholic beverages sold there, so we're not looking for an alcohol permit. And if we could have the two areas, I don't know if we would need it, but it would probably just take, you know, just to block it off in front of the church so people wouldn't be able to go into that half of the parking lot that would be on the museum side. So it's just gonna be the people that come out of church, yeah.
So the front of the church isn't Fourth Street? Are you asking to close Fourth Street?
No, no, DeBurg. DeBurg, as they come out, so, yeah. Yeah, so whatever the front is, but it's the DeBurg where people enter. So it would be that kind of small area that, it's probably pretty, I don't think it would be truly impact much parking or anything like that. It'll be easy, if, you know, if not approved, we would just probably have to move over into the desert, which is certainly a reasonable option. The utilities are, you know, will be used in the school and parish, so we are not gonna bring restrooms in or porta-potties or anything like that. And I think we had the vision that it'll be totally finished by probably nine o'clock. It's gonna be just as, you know, it's not gonna be a rowdy crowd.
So it'd just be in front of the church.
Yeah.
Reebok place and then the little parking lot between the Isle of Flags and the museum.
Like that ninety degree?
Right. And then nothing on Third Street, I mean on Merchant.
No, nothing on Merchant.
Right.
And it wouldn't go into Third.
Right.
We had a previous request for a celebration at the Isle of Flags area that we weren't in favor of because there was gonna be alcohol and it was designed for, basically for teenagers.
Yeah.
And I don't have any of the concerns with your request that I have with that request. I think it's a very different type of celebration.
Although we did discuss the need to protect the planted areas.
Yeah, and what's the date?
It's October fourth, Saturday, October fourth.
So that's gonna be a lot less destructive even if something gets trampled and won't hurt nearly as bad.
No.
I've already checked with the expert on that.
I, I don't want to, we can put some protecting around the planting area, but it's not gonna be, you know, church will probably get out about six fifteen and they'll probably eat a couple hamburgers and go home. It's not meant to, you know, to carry on into the night. So if they want to do that, they can go to some other venue.
I think we can hold on it now.
No.
You gotta wait till the end.
Public appearances.
Okay.
But the real invitation is for you all to come and see that. I think you'll be very pleased about this investment in downtown Saint Genevieve. Do you all have any questions about it or anything?
Nope.
All right.
I'm just excited every time I drive by and I see new windows and new bricks and it's a, it is an exciting time in downtown Saint Genevieve with the two major projects occurring.
Yeah, yeah, I really think so. And if, when you go inside and see what's going on in there, you know, I've spent a lot of my life there and...
How many years?
It's way too many, way too many. So it's kind of a, you know, kind of gift to be able to come back and be part of it. And so, you know, but there's also a lot of kind of pressure to make sure you do it right.
Joe, we all spend a lot of life there, our life there.
Ricky, yeah, you were there just as much as I was.
Well, we all were.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right. We're probably gonna approve it, you guys think we might approve it after a while? Thanks for coming. Okay, Martin, the city administrator report?
Okay. We got our approval, I think I reported it at our last meeting, to begin the acquisition of right-of-way for the trail and also the extension of Parkwood. And so I talked to the chairman of the, first I talked to the guy in charge of real estate for the Archdiocese to make sure that we were on board with him. And he was, he remembered the project and said pretty much whatever we worked out with a local parish committee was okay with him. And so although he'll have to be involved in reviewing the work. So I called the chairman of the finance committee and talked about selecting an appraiser. We're required to have it appraised by the federal regulations. And we discussed using a local appraiser. He declined because he felt he was too close to the church and to be objective and didn't think it would be a good thing. And referred me to Robert Brunz, an appraiser with whom I am familiar, who has offices in Thetis and used to have his office here. So he's very familiar with Saint Genevieve and what we do. So I sent him the information, he reviewed it, he called MODOT because he's doing work with MODOT now. There were a couple of questions. He's asked that the right-of-way plat be amended a little bit to reduce the scope of what he would have to do because the way it's drawn now would include appraising the cemetery and the ball fields and it's just, they need to redefine the project boundary to exclude those parts and reduce his scope of work. And so I think I put them in contact today and I'll know more about their conversation tomorrow or certainly next week. Our big meeting with the railroads occurred today. It was supposed to have happened Tuesday, but the railroad folks had conflicts, so we moved it to today. It was a roomful of railroad representatives and Port Authority representatives and Mississippi Lime representatives and city representatives. I'd like to say that everybody was on the same page, but that didn't really happen. The, it started off a little rough. The railroad's position was, we, you know, I'm sorry you're having problems, but it's our right-of-way and it's all we have to worry about. And we can't do work without budgets and corps of engineers and, you know, we took the position that, you know, it used to work and it doesn't work now and so can't you just like work with us to try and find a solution? And we finally, after about forty-five minutes, got to the point where they agreed to work with us if we kind of took some of the lead. So I said, "Look, I'll call the corps of engineers and I'll see about the permit. If I get that, will you do, well, yeah, if you did that, then maybe..." So we kind of got past the objections. And we figured out a way that we think we can affect improvements that will stay within their right-of-way so they don't have to work on private property. I think the pieces are in place to solve the problem, but it ain't gonna be fast.
This is for North Main up by the ball field?
Well, it's North Main plus south of the levee, there are four drainage culverts that aren't blocked on the riverside. If they were open, they'd flow out into the levee district's field, kind of the retention area. But they still need to be, they need to be open too. And they even questioned when we joined them out in the field, said, "Well, how do you know they're blocked?" I said, "'Cause when it rains, water floods our street." Well, it looks open to me. I don't know where it's blocked. So I talked to Steve about using our camera equipment to go up in there and we'll tell them where it's blocked and they can go in and take care of it. The Union Pacific representative was a lot more cooperative. So I spent some time with him talking about the problems they're not addressing, like the deteriorated tie at Tenth Street, the maintenance of weeds in the right-of-way in various locations, the Fourth Street crossing that is, you know, getting this grade changed and the continued maintenance or lack of maintenance of the trellis at Main and, in, at Main and South Galloway. Trestle, I said trellis.
I didn't catch that.
We know what you meant.
I said trellis, which means... Ryan climbs up. So, so we've got names, we've got numbers, we've got people who are kind of committed and we still have some work to do. Mr. Hoag was here and said, you know, whatever you need to do on my property is okay with me. So, and that's where the major drainage channel is, it's across his field. So, you know, the corps of engineer thing will take a while. I'm gonna ask the levee district, kind of following something Tom observed at a meeting he went to. I don't know what portion, I'm really not sure where their northern boundary is, but I think there's a role for the levee district in helping us take care of drainage problems. So we'll be talking to the levee district without participating. And we don't have any money, but we can, we'll find resources from various places. And hopefully we'll move on. You may be aware from an article in the paper that Congressman Smith was here.
I wish I would've been aware before he came, instead of being aware after he was here going.
It's another one of those email things?
Wouldn't have been a real nice opportunity.
Second time now, second time.
Well, he called and said, "Can we meet?" And I said, "Yes." And he called, his staff person called. And I didn't really have an idea of what it is, who he wanted to talk to, I knew he wanted an update. So I called Bob Mueller, who's been monitoring the park study process. And he said, "Well, you know, we really ought to have the affected property owners there." So I called, the staff member back and said, "You know, how many people..." He said, "Well, they didn't want to make a big deal out of it, they'd want a big public event." And then he called, should they call me the day before and said, "Well, can the press be there?" I said, "Wait a minute, you told, you didn't want to make this a public event." So I got the wrong signals up front, but even so, you know, you're right, I could've notified you if you wanted to come. And that was, that was my constraint because when we started, they didn't want to make it a political event.
Yeah, I would've gone to the last man of this one.
The, I collected from Mrs. Holtz yesterday the portion we negotiated on the check she received from the insurance company for the house. I called Mr. Geg today and said, "We're ready, we've got some money in hand and we need to talk and about proceeding on the proposal that he had." And he was busy today, he's gonna call me tomorrow, we're gonna set something up.
What are you thinking the timetable's gonna be to remove the ice or do you, did you get any word from him at all on that?
I'll meet with him, I mean, I, we got a negotiated contract and you gotta approve it. So it's gonna take, he and I will talk about the details.
I mean, will he be ready to move on once everything's approved?
Yes, of course.
Is he gonna wait until spring and...
No, I don't think so. He's got somebody who wants to partner with him on putting something else on there, so. And he's anxious to get going, so I don't think there's any incentive to sit on it.
I do believe though, isn't he gonna try and salvage the weather boards? That was one thing I heard, just for, any event someone into, you know, the historic district needed some of those type of boards. And that could make it last a little longer.
I did add, yeah, but, anyway. We haven't talked about the specifics of his demolition. Jennifer Conley is the, I'm sorry, it's not Conley, it's Christopher, is the owner of the, or the daughter of the Hotops who I've been talking to. I reported to you that the title company and the city attorney advised us that we could, that somebody could acquire clear title to that as long as the heirs were willing to sign an affidavit of ownership. I contacted the adjacent property owners, I gave them her phone number and said if they were interested in pursuing that, that they should call her. I haven't heard anything from either of them. I've placed calls to her, she's not returning my phone calls. At some point, we're gonna take code enforcement action. I just don't know how to get potential buyers talking to her. I don't know that there are potential buyers, I thought there were, but they're not communicating with me either. But that's probably because she's not calling them back.
Maybe a little code enforcement action would motivate her to answer the phone calls or write her letters with citations and fines.
Evidently she's not returning, you know, she's not doing anything else, she just won't correspond at all, will she?
All I have is, I do have an mailing address, so we can't, we can't send her a certified letter. Even though we decided not to move forward with a fire equipment issue, we went ahead and kept some meetings that we had established with the local industry to talk about the, what their level of participation or interest in participating would be when we come up with a plan. Of the three that we visited and were still working on a wholesome appointment, they said absolutely. But I think two of the three said, "You know, why don't we all just get together in a room as a group of affected parties and talk about what we can do as a group as opposed to talking about it individually." And I thought that was a good suggestion and they're willing to do it. So until we have a project though, I don't know, you know, it's kind of hard to say what we'd be asking for. So, but we have a sense from them that they're gonna cooperate, be willing to cooperate. And at what level and for what purpose, you know, that's yet to be decided. Finally, I want to just talk about this briefly, we didn't budget anything for it, but we will be meeting. Right now, we keep our records electronically and physically. The Secretary of State has standards for public record keeping that require us to keep physical minutes, minute books. You can microfiche them, you can put them on film, but you can't store them in electronic media. They don't accept CDs or hard drives or however else you might do it. And historically, that came because they didn't know how long those images would last. Surely, I think we've kind of moved beyond that, but the state has not. So they're still saying you gotta keep your records, the physical record. But what it brought to light is our records are all kept here. And if a natural disaster were to occur, we'd lose them. So we're starting to think ways in which we can back up our records. And we still have to keep them, it's still have to be physical records, but it doesn't mean we couldn't scan them, store them off-site, have an ability to reproduce them in the event of, because there's lots of valuable historic records in this building. And so the scope of that, you know, not something we're considering in this year's budget, as you know. We'll be working to figure out what the scope of that is, be investigating if there's grants available. The Secretary of State used to have grants available for that purpose, but that program died about three years, six years ago. But that doesn't mean we can't find other sources of supporting. That concludes my report, except for questions if you can ask.
So what's the, what did he come up with on Tenth Street on that tie? The railroad? Because every week it's getting worse.
Here's what he said. They ride the rails, rail, yeah, rides the rails. You know, you've seen those trucks out there, they've got the, and what they, they feel things that are not quite right. He said, "But something that they don't feel, they don't really notice." So he might not notice that. And he said, "Typically what happens is they get a repair, they estimate the cost, they put it in the budget and they get it done." And I said, "Well, that, you know, we've been complaining about this for six months." And he said, "Yeah, yeah," he took a picture of it, "I gotta talk to my supervisor." And that's, that's what I heard from him. So I got his name and number, so he's not gonna get away from us. I'll be calling him to find out what his supervisor had to say. But until then, I don't know what to do with that.
Which one is that?
This tie is almost...
No, I mean which, which type?
Well, that's UP.
So I think right shortly you're gonna start having a lot of police records on it. Because I'm watching the cars go across and you're gonna start having a lot of serious damage on vehicles.
I mean, we can't mess with it.
We are legally... No, we can't do work in the railroad right now.
Right, okay.
But I'll talk, yeah, I'll just, I'll give him a week. If he doesn't get the commute a week, I'll be on it.
We might have to close that street down, John.
But are they done, are they going around or going up? I'm watching them.
I try to miss it, you gotta get way over to miss it.
Truck broke down and dumped some rocks and fell off the toll road.
Okay, any other questions for Martin? All right, we'll move on. Got staff reports here and that Dave Pinkley's up, is Dave back there? There he is.
Yeah.
Yeah. He's back.
Good evening.
How's everybody?
As you see on my report, we've been weeding and painting lines and patching holes and turn around and do it again. And again, and again.
Last time Dave was here for budget, we talked about the availability of salt. It didn't get any better.
No.
I touched, I reached out to the surrounding municipalities to see if they could give me any assistance. They gave me some names of people to call. I got a response from Farmington saying, join the crowd, we can't find any either.
Dave, one of the quarries that we worked in this week, while I was there, they were setting up to blend a special blend of fines and chips specifically for snow and ice covered roads because of the shortage of salt. So there were some people in the aggregate industry trying to figure out how to make it and how good it would be. So it's something just to keep our eyes open for. The hazards we talked about, you know, of trying to clean it up and getting in the sewer and all that sort of stuff, that, that there is a real marketing developing out there. So we just need to keep a.
Well, like I said, we can always go back to cinders. But we've had so many problems with cinders, you know, breaking windshield and chipping paint.
And this, this rock product may be more trouble than it's worth, but it, I had never heard of, they're actually, they're, they got a name for the product and they're making it. So they're, they must be getting an, I feel from their customer base about the availability of salt is low and we're going to try to offer some alternative products.
Yeah, and if it's solid, but like I say, far as like screenings from Lantkill, that, that'll melt. And it'll, I honest to God think it'd make it more slicker than what the ice would be.
I just wanted to bring it up because it's, they're going to try to market this product and we should at least take, let them.
Exactly. I like trying.
Take a look at it and see what it looks like and just.
Sounds like we're not going to have a choice.
Trying to cross our fingers for the farmer's armpit that will be wrong this year.
And John, we've never used, as long as I've been here, we've never used screenings. The Special Road has though. That's probably where you heard that. They used to use it, yeah, on the county.
Over the years, we've read about natural products, beet, beet juice based products. And everybody says it's very expensive and they don't, they aren't as effective, so nobody really uses them. But we're at a point where very expensive doesn't seem to be a problem because the salt's very expensive if you get it.
Calcium chloride and all the other.
I wonder if there's a, what, what the market is for that product.
Well, like I say, with the highway department, I went out last year after we discussed the salt bribe and looked at their operation. And that's almost like us, you know, talking about the Durapatcher, buying the tank and everything. And it's, it, you know, it's, they got like four tanks and they got a salt bribe and, you know, where they pump it in here and there. And I mean, it's just, it's an amazing, you need to run out and look at that. I mean, of course, look how many miles of highway they do.
Yeah, Joe. Our port authority down there, do they just offload barges? I mean, load barges or can they offload too?
They have no real capacity unless the barge brings an offloader with it.
So they don't have.
Have you been down there and looked at it?
Not yet, no.
If you go drive down there, you'll get a better understanding. I mean, it's forty feet off the dam on water. Eventually it will.
So having a barge load of salt or something come in and we get it that way rather than shipped in?
Storage, where are we going to store it? How many tons was that, Martin? You remember how many, was it fifteen hundred tons come on a barge?
It's a huge number.
Yeah, it'd be more than fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
It's like.
Yes.
Big old huge. I mean, where, where would we store it?
But if we, you know, if, if there were an opportunity to buy, well, without kind of the smaller quantities that we normally buy, I'm getting the sense that we'd be, if we, if we found it and I called Festus and Perryville and Farmington, I think we'd have some partners on, on buying it. We just got to find it. It's not there. It's just not out there.
Actually, the, the email that you sent me, Martin, I called Martin Salt today because Perryville gets theirs and they never called me back. But of course, the name that they gave, she no longer works there. And the other lady, she never called me back. And I called that one that Cape uses and they said, have you bought from us last year? I said, no. She said, well, then we can't sell to you. She said, we're only selling to half of our customers. I said, so in other words, you're not getting any salt either. She says, no, very little we're getting.
David, is potassium chloride just too expensive to use, isn't it?
We've never really used it. So, I mean, we could check into that.
Does a great job.
But, yeah, but I would, I would think probably it would be pretty expensive, you know, per ton.
Well, I mean, yeah, but if we're looking at a hundred and fifty dollars a ton for salt.
It certainly just sounds like.
Of course, that's also going to go up because people are turning to it instead of salt.
Don't you think, Dave, we need to have a real sense of urgency to look at everything that, even the things we don't think could work for us, it'd be hard to, it'd be hard not to be able to tell everybody. We, we looked everywhere and did everything we could.
Well, like I say, years ago, we used to use nothing but cinders. We didn't even use salt years ago. Oh, yeah, we, we can get cinders.
Where do you get cinders at?
Rush Island.
Okay.
But the stuff you're talking about, that's easier on your streets too.
Easier on everything. Sidewalks, streets, everything.
Does a ton of that go as far as a ton of salt does?
I don't think of it, but I think it's going to be just so outrageously priced. We're not going to be able to get it.
Well, everybody that, that makes an alternative to salt is going to recognize the opportunity for higher profits. And, yeah, it's just going to be a tough environment. We just got to look under every stone.
Or pray for it, don't you?
One other thing, Mr. Roger was talking a while ago about the, the road closures that he'd like for that valley event. Actually, if you look at that, I think that property belongs to the county.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
Street, the island on the other side of the place?
Yeah, that belongs to the county also.
Yeah, well, that's kind of.
I mean, he might, he might, I don't know.
I'll call him, Martin.
He might have to go to the county and ask for permission too. But, you know, I just wanted to bring that up in case you guys forgot about that. But that belongs at the county.
Parking area.
Parking area. And DeBurg belongs to the county, half of them.
Half of it.
Churches on the other halves.
There between museum and the.
Or that much.
What was the name of that street?
Come on, never had a street. I mean, never had a name, but you could cut through there and.
Anything else for Dave?
No, but I'll address something in the committee reports that, that's going to have your input needed at some point.
I'll stick around.
No, you're going to take a little minute.
Good deal. Thank you, Dave.
Good evening.
Evening.
I don't have a whole lot to report. As you see in the report, the, our 10th officer is in place. He's under, under training now, seems to be doing really well. I'm sure you guys probably got the email today in reference to the, the previous chief, Dale Newman, passed away yesterday. And funeral arrangements are actually pretty, pretty soon. The visitation's going to be tomorrow. And I apologize, I don't know the name of the city. It's, it's very far south.
S E N A T H?
Cenith?
I don't know how you pronounce it.
Possibly. It's down in Bootyill.
Close to Arkansas.
Tomorrow at six and then the funeral's going to be Saturday at two, in the same, same location. So certainly thoughts and prayers are with his family and friends. Other than that, I don't believe there's anything too pressing on the, on the report. Quick note, later in the agenda, there's a, an ordinance or a resolution, I should say, authorizing us to enter into a contract with the state. I realized, once I got the copy of this, the copy that I had given is not correct in that the primary contact will actually be the mayor, which is, which is already corrected on my end and will be submitted as such. But for, for your purposes, that has been corrected and we'll say the mayor, which is the, the actual authority on the grant.
I guess you just keep reminding us about your cops that cooked there too.
Yes, that's, it's November 26th, I believe.
We'll have one meeting actually, as well, we'll have one the night before.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll have two more meetings between now and then, so.
Well, you got it on here.
I enjoy that every year.
If you need some help with anything or something.
Yeah, absolutely. Anybody's welcome.
We have to deputize him in order to do that?
Yeah, yeah. We may need to do that anyways. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Eric.
Steve with the Lions.
Thank you, board. Last month, we had a couple more water leaks. We had one on Herzog Lane, which was a small two inch line. The other one was another leak on St. Mary's Road, which was a transact. Since then, we also had one more on St. Mary's Road also. In the past month, we've had two down that area. As Joe mentioned earlier, we did implement a new process when there is a leak. And I mentioned at the last meeting, we contact the aldermen and the ward. We also contact Martin, the city administrator. We, everybody's on board of what's going on and where.
Could you go over again what, what prompted boil water order? Just in case somebody wasn't listening the last time.
There's, if you notice in here, and what you hear on the radio is called a boil advisory. And boil advisory is issued when pressure drops below twenty PSI for a period of time. It doesn't become a boil order until the water's shut off completely or there's a failed bacteriological sample.
So it has been pretty rare to have that, in my recollection.
Yes.
Yeah, it's just that the citizens aren't aware of the distinction. So they hear the advisory, so then they've got to boil my water.
Yeah, boil advisory is not a boiler by no means.
Anything else, Steve?
How's your new tractor, Steve?
Tractor's doing great.
Is it working out well?
Yes, it is. It's, we've used it about every other day since we've had it.
Do you know when you're going to get your new SCADA system?
I'm expecting a scheduled completion. You know, it's a projected timeline for different phases of the project. I expect that anytime.
I see you had a, a little problem.
Yeah, the SCADA system went down the other day, well, last month for, was down for just over twenty-four hours. And that's, staff continuously working on it and computer people within the company getting it going. But we were unable to start the SCADA system for a whole day.
Well, hopefully those problems will be eliminated very soon.
See on station one, you said you found an orange gelsu fogging the pump.
Yes.
And then this station number two, you said it was also fogging, what was it fogged?
The pump destroys what's in there. It's hard to tell sometimes unless it's a real hard material. Pump station two was just some, some kind of white material. Couldn't identify it.
Anything else?
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, can I read your report from the authority? Any questions, Martin? Maybe you can ask. Sam is not here either, so is there anything that Martin can pass along to Sam? Would you discuss anything on the report also?
I think it's noteworthy that the attendance to 2014 consistently is higher than the last year. So something's working.
It's interesting that the non-U.S. visitors, visit St. Mary's site website. Average visitors visit six pages per web session. Canada, Brazil and the UK are largest non, in the UK are largest non-U.S. viewer foot crews from social media. That is what I think folks in Brazil would be, you know, looking for the Midwest vacation, but somebody is. Very, very interesting statistics.
Anything else? Okay, moving on. Committee reports. I think I heard Tom say something about.
I have, I have a committee report. The park board met on the, what's that, Monday of last week? And I was able to attend that. Martin was there. It was a very interesting and energetic meeting. I asked the, the board to think about how we can save money. And we were going through the budgeting process and we've asked every department, how can we save money? And one way would be to mow an awful lot of grass. You know, so I challenged the park board to think about creative ways to address the buyout properties. Maybe we can get somebody else to utilize those and get our mowers off that grass. And some creative ways to reduce the amount of mowing in the Sherma Cat Park on areas where they don't really get any public use. Slopes, hillsides, that sort of thing. And, boy, they really kind of tuck that and started thinking about the wildlife that is abundant in the park and maybe getting the, like the Turkey Federation involved in planting some plots to take out grass, but put in something that looks good. And it doesn't, you know, it's not unruly and some Missouri named wildflowers. And the majority of the board got pretty energetic about that. And, but there was also some pushback from a couple of board members that, well, if we, because my approach to them was, if you can save some money and, and reduce, by reducing mowing, I would encourage the board of aldermen to give you part of that money to use as discretionary spending. If playground equipment needs to be replaced or a swing set or just, you know, not the whole budget, but the park board is made up by a group of people, some nearing twenty years on that board, at least two members, that, that really give their time and their energy and they don't, and they can't do anything because we don't have a budget that we can give them to spend money on. So my ideal would be if they could save, let's say they could save ten thousand dollars, maybe we give them five thousand dollars of that for discretionary spending. And man, that, that set off the alarms. They'll never give us that money. The board, they would never, they would say they would, but they wouldn't do it. And that kind of got under my skin real quick. But it was just pure and real frustration that over the years, they've tried to do things and they really haven't been able to get anywhere. So I, I'm really encouraged that they're going to take some creative looks at how to reduce our spending on maintenance in the parks. That's a good board, good people on it, and I think we need to reward them somehow for their, their energy and their time. And if we could, if they could figure out how to save us some money, I think we ought to give them some of it back for discretionary spending. So we'll see how that turns out.
See, nothing wrong with that at all. Nothing wrong with it.
Anything else there?
Is that what you needed Dave for?
Oh, Dave. Sorry, thank you so much.
Well, you were not just making him stay here to sit.
No, I did, just like the last, the last work session. You just hit it. Also at the park board meeting, a couple of board members took the opportunity when I said, you know, we need to reduce our costs at, at every department. They said, well, why don't we increase our revenue in the parks department and start charging appropriate fees for our maintenance of the ball diamonds? And then a few board members, oh, easy, don't, you can't talk about that. And I'm like, well, why not? Well, because it's taboo. It's a taboo subject. And I don't go for that at all. Why is that taboo? Now, Martin said that the previous board to my, we joined the board had, had a work session or two and had talked about trying to get a reasonable fee. I would not propose that we try to make a profit off of our maintenance of the park. But I do think that we should again take another look, only because the park board addressed this and said, okay, it costs us this much maintenance for pair of the ball diamonds for a tournament, we should charge the tournament this much money? The leaks and things to, to look at a reasonable approach to recovering our costs associated. I think that we have a responsibility to do those things, but, you know, it's, it's a pretty big cost that we're not getting close on. Not that we get close on recovery costs for a whole lot of things, but the park board... But the Park Board members did bring that up. And I was... I guess I was a little surprised that they feel that over the years, when they brought it up, that that's a taboo subject. I just was a little surprised by that. So Dave, from your perspective, I know you've done... You've looked at this and you've got numbers from around. And from everybody else's perspective, is this something... How do we go about revisiting this? Or do you guys have made your minds up, you don't want to revisit?
No, I've always thought we should do that. I don't know what our local schools pay. Well, St. Valley doesn't pay at all anymore. But what does St. Jim's pay? Do we...
It's considered a donation. It's not... You haven't ever established a fee.
Okay.
So we just ask for it and give them a number. They can give us... They've been given $500.
Every other school that has their own, they have a maintenance cost. I'm not trying to make it any hardship for any kid that wants to play lily, right? Or T-ball or any... We don't... That's not the goal.
Right.
Not at all. But at the same time, we need to look at communities of our size. Not what Festus does, not what Farmington does. Find the communities of our size and see what they do. And do they attempt to recover a better portion of it?
One of the questions is if the... I don't want to say we're in competition, but if they have options.
Right, and they brought that up.
You know, the Tosi isn't an option.
They brought up that... I'm sorry, Martin.
Yeah, so we need to select communities that are at least within the same market area to compare to so that we're in balance with whatever their options are.
So the balance... I'm sorry, Joe, but the balance side of that as well is, they said, "Look, you know, when these tournaments come here, they say they'd love to come here because they don't have to pay a fee." So that's good for the city, right? We're getting these tournaments, we're getting some tax revenue. And like Joe was talking earlier, I don't understand what that multiplier is. But there's revenue that comes off all these families coming into town for a Saturday. So I don't think it's something we need to just go out and beat our chest that we're gonna charge this by God or else. It's just something we need to really take another look at.
Well, I can tell you that most of the summer, and we fell behind on the mowing because of the fact getting ball fields ready. And actually, right now, since we do so much for the ball players and stuff, the soccer league basically says, "We're not paying for the paint or anything anymore." So we're actually paying for the paint. So, I mean, it was kind of a trickle-down effect. You know, we do it for them, you gotta do it for us. And which, you know, they used to, you know, buy their own paint and everything. I mean, we don't have the manpower to be on them ball fields. I mean, we're under quite a few hours a day, you know, to get them and get them done right. You know, because we're under kind of scrutiny on that because some people want the ball fields like Bush Stadium. And, you know, which I played ball for 30 years. I played all over the place. And most of them, they just chop it and you play on it. But, you know, we do take kind of pride on our ball fields. They do look nice, which is fine. But like I said, if we had six-man, seven-man crew, it'd be a lot different. But our park is... The grass is really, you know, got out of hand because of that. And I didn't have the luxury this year, which used to be we'd take and, you know, send a couple of my guys up there to help them mow. Well, this year, we were busy doing a lot of patching and stuff, so we didn't have that luxury. So the park did get out of hand.
I just think we need to improve the balance.
And I'm sure it'd be hard to pull off the top of your head, but do you have any idea what it costs to get the ball fields ready in the spring to go? After you get them ready to go, what it costs to keep them going throughout the baseball season?
We've asked Darren to do that before, and I'll talk with him tomorrow. I'll see if he's still got them figures. Because, you know, I had him write down all the man-hours and the equipment that he actually works on the field.
I don't remember the exact figure, but it was over $50,000.
Yeah, it was...
Over 50?
That's 25% almost of the Park Board, of the Park budget.
And two of them ball fields do not belong to us.
Now, 17... We get 17.5 from the county. So that mitigates it. So what, not...
What do you mean, two ball fields don't belong to us?
They belong to the county. Yank South and Leon's. They don't belong to the city.
Can we do the maintenance? But that's why we get them.
That's why we get 17,000.
And the VFW field actually belongs to the VFW. We just... We lease it from them. The River Dogs take care of it while they're playing. And once they're done playing, then they walk away from it, so.
The money from the concession stands, where does that go?
Uh, the community center.
And then they also charge for parking. Is that...
Oh, I didn't know they charged for parking.
Yeah, I've been down there a few times. They had about... Somebody standing there at the beginning of the parking lot and they were charging the cars.
Are you talking about the Yanks Field or Leon's?
Down at the Yanks.
Okay, a lot of times during high school events, they charge for it.
But where does that go? I know it's not a lot of money, but where does that go?
Pam, you got kids in school on it?
I would say it goes to the...
To the Yanks.
No, the school, doesn't it?
It would go to the state. I think the only time they charge is if it's a state, like if it's a district or a state playoff game or something like that.
That's the only time there's a charge. And that goes directly to the state.
Yeah.
And I think the concession stand is at... You said the community center. That's just the one on Leon's.
Leon's, yeah.
And then the other ones ran by...
Yes. Thanks.
I just think we need to find a better balance of... And I think it's tricky. I don't think you just say, "Okay, start tomorrow. You guys all gotta pay this much." But we need to try to build up to that.
Actually, we went around to different areas and kind of got the prices, what they charge and what, you know, tried to compare. But it just got blew out the water on that one, so.
The Park Board certainly thought that was a taboo subject.
Yeah.
I don't think any subject that regards city government should be looked at as tabooed by anybody in the community.
Kind of a pet peeve of mine, too, that our guys are up there taking care of it. We're, you know, we can't get anything else done. I mean, it'd be different if we had the bonus of money where we can give to the people. But, you know, like with the swimming pool. We always lost money every year on the swimming pool. But it was something we did. But we had money back then, you know, a little bit, not much, but...
The pool issue came up.
It did. They said the kind of same thing. They said all they heard was how much the pool costs per year. And when they finally posed a pool, they thought, "Well, good. At least we're gonna be able to spend more on parks." And the Board of Aldermen took that money away and went somewhere else with it. So, I mean, these folks on the Park Board have... Some of them, like I said, pretty close to 20 years. And they're still there, but they've been kind of beat down where they're not real enthusiastic that they would be treated very good by the Board of Aldermen if they pitched in and helped us save some money.
And a lot of that equipment up there, we're supposed to replace in 20 years. And that tornado slide's been up there, and I'm rubbing 55. It's been up there since I was a little kid. I mean, it should disappear real quick. But we've asked it, and we can't get an answer, so. I mean, to me, I think it's a liability.
That's all I have on the Park Board. Thank you for your time.
Any other committee reports?
I talked about housing there before. Some of them got here.
Yeah.
Tina's resigned on October 1st. They contacted a company to manage it from Cade.
Who's resigning? This team of the Housing Authority. Donnie's on that board.
Oh, okay.
All right.
They asked if the city could help in any way, and I... The mayor's not here to answer that. One Board member turned in his termination and two other said they're going to... So that leaves two members left off the Board.
Are they just retiring by or is there some controversy?
Yeah, just fed up with it. The HUD is raising the people's rent. It's not Robin would do enough. That's HUD. So they got no control over that, but... They'll be down to Phil Ideman and myself there probably in the next... Probably October 1st, so don't know what we can do, but...
And the mayor points the Board members, so.
Right.
We gotta get somebody that's interested, though, if we can.
Good luck.
You've got some contacts around town. We know who might be able to...
How many Board members are there? Seven?
Well, there was...
He's a resident Board member.
Are you counting Tina? No?
You don't count Tina.
No, okay. One, two, three, four, five was there. And then one person from the Housing.
So great opportunity, you by listening or watching on television. If you're gonna get involved. And a very important Board.
How often they meet this month?
What's a month? Usually the last Monday of the month.
That's daytime meeting, isn't it?
Four o'clock.
Maybe we'll get some takers after this evening. Anyone else, committee reports? We got the consent agenda. We got the closed session minutes here from July 24th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion by best, second by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
All in. We go to regular meeting, August 14th.
Motion to approve those.
Second.
Motion by Joe, second by best, all in favor?
Aye.
We got another closed session. August 14th?
Yeah.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Got motion by best, second by Donnie, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, one more, the special meeting, August 21st.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe?
Second.
Second by... Was that you, Teddy, Dan?
No.
Kind of stereotyped.
Second by Teddy, all in favor?
Aye.
Financial report. For July.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Tom?
Second.
Second by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. We'll move on to the public hearing. Did the...
City Treasurer's report?
Oh, did we do that?
Does that come along or the same?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a financial... Yeah, that's a financial.
So that's financial, flag, treasurer's report. Okay, the public hearing is the hearing that is the... That citizens may comment on the property tax rate proposed to be set by the city of St. Jim's. Tax rate shall be set to produce revenues which the budget for the fiscal year 2015 shows to be required from the property tax.
For anyone listening?
8:01.
The tax rate... The Hancock Amendment dictates that the city may not benefit by its natural appreciation in property values. So the tax rate, you get notice from the state as to where to set the tax rate to ensure that our revenues don't rise or fall beyond the limits established by the Hancock Amendment. The only way to realize an increase in tax revenue is to have a vote of the people. So this is just that adjustment that's dictated by the state to reflect a change in property values.
Will we read them now, or the rates?
They're on the public...
Would you read them for us, Pam?
Sure. The proposed tax rate for 2014 for general revenue is .4789 cents. Our cemetery fund is .0478. For the band, it's .0769. And for our park and recreation, it's .1245. And it comes to a total of .7281.
May I comment?
Yes.
The band gets 7.5 cents for 100. And Parks and Recreation only gets 12.5 cents? That seems like an inordinate amount for the band tax. Is there anything we can do about that? It's just the way it is?
It's an election.
I mean, when you look at...
The tax that was passed by the voters.
Yeah, but when you just look at that, I just wonder if people understand.
Years ago, we tried that book, and just about got ran out of town.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, we had to elect.
It's taboo. That's on the taboo list.
Oh, gosh.
I just... Listen, I love the city band.
Oh, yeah.
Compared to Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec, they get a very big chunk compared to the band, so that's my only concern.
Yeah, but that's why they started the grants.
Oh, you mean because they had extra money?
No.
Or what?
No, started the grants, the band or music grants.
Yeah.
People can apply for it.
From the band fund.
Yeah. That's why they started a few years.
Because they had the excess money, yeah.
Chunk of money set back.
Yeah.
And that's been, I think, a great and successful program.
Yeah, it has been.
But they are giving back.
Right.
Oh, and I want to say, and it's important, it's just when you look at the amount of tax the band gets compared to the bigger park system, it seems it's out of scale a little bit.
Yeah, Parks and Rec, 12 cents to the band, 7.5 cents to the 12.4 to the band's 7.7.
Yeah.
Relatively speaking, I see a point.
Anything else from the Board or from the audience here about the tax rate? Okay, I guess we can close this public hearing at 8:04. All right. Okay, resolution 2014, Day 29, Pam, by...
Okay, resolution authorizing the St. Jim's Police Department to apply for a grant from the Missouri Department of Public Safety Grant Program.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Did you look... Donnie, why don't you tell them what you found?
Okay.
Does it have to do with cheaper body cameras?
Yeah, yeah.
If I could, this is 100% grant that is no match and is a better quality camera that's a smaller package. The cheaper body cameras are a big box that you wear on the exterior of your uniform. The camera that I am proposing, again, is no out-of-pocket to the city and it's a superior camera to that of the cheaper models that have been proposed.
Well, like I said, they're about the size of a deck of cards. They range from 300 to 800. I guess it depends on your...
These are 795?
And it's essentially the size of a button.
That's fine. I just had run across that word.
Yeah, and we had certainly looked into those. I mean, the advantage to the ones that we're looking at for the existing car cameras that we have that are still functioning, we can sync these to that. It's the same model and brand. And also, just it's a lot more user-friendly and tested for quality and functionality. And I think that that's what best...
Image is better?
I'm sorry.
Does it produce a better image?
It's a high-definition picture. It's a 1080p.
Does that keep the data? Say a cop would get out his car, somebody would grab his camera?
It's a separate pack. The lens and pack itself are separate. And that's the disadvantage to...
Would the data show what really happened if somebody stole his camera?
Yes, I was trying to explain that. The larger deck of card style camera that somebody could grab is a potential problem. This camera...
The data is stored in the camera.
The data will be stored either in the vest or in the pocket and will not be accessible for people to grab. The camera itself will essentially look like a button on the uniform.
I just say more Ellisville bought 24 from 75, so I just...
Yeah.
Could've sold that to you, but you're aware of it, so...
Well, I appreciate it, and we certainly have researched that. And there again, I mean, this was an item that I asked for in the budget that was not funded. So the purpose of the grant is to fund these without any cost to the city.
Be a good idea to have these. How would they use these? Anytime they're on duty, they'd be there?
They would be required under policy to have it accessible and in use.
So is that term? So, is that, is that turned on and off by the officer, or...
There, there are different, i- if it synced to the, to the in-car cameras that we have, anytime you activate your in-car camera, it will activate that, um, and it will be similar to, to that that we have, it will be activated by, uh, by your, by your microphone.
Right.
Similar to the other ones, if something should happen when you're out of your car and couldn't activate it with the lights, you could activate it remotely with, with the, uh, with the microphone, so it, it's a similar setup.
I see, uh, part of the cost is for your docking system to download your cameras.
Correct, and that's, that's a one, a one docking station.
One docking station and one pause.
And I'm looking, that, that will outfit eight officers, which are essentially all of our first-line supervisors and, and, uh, patrol officers. Uh, does not include myself or Jason, and I was wanting to approach Martin about maybe using some of the money that we have in that insurance fund to, to purchase those two for the events that we are in uniform, or, or helping cover, cover calls.
Wouldn't hurt the hell to actually, too, in case one bug free or something like that.
That's good stuff. Wouldn't be any question either, in the event of something happened if it was on...
Well, and like we, we mentioned in the last budget meeting, you know, just in light of the events that happened in Ferguson, you know, that, that, all of that sparked as a result of an officer-involved shooting where there was no video to show the circumstances.
Right.
And this, this takes it beyond an in-car camera in that, you know, you may have limited audio, uh, outside of your car, if you get into a house, get into a domestic situation and, and a use support situation, you may have some audio, it may be scratchy, uh, at least this will, will have, essentially, anytime the officer is, is involved in a situation, it will hopefully shed some light.
Is this, is this something you think that's got a good chance of being funded?
I hope so, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a statewide grant, so, I mean, there will be some competition for it.
Mm-hmm.
But it certainly fits within the parameters of, of what they're looking for. Our initial thought, we had, we had been funded ballistic vests through this grant in the past, and after completing the grant, I had a question about one of the fields, went back through and missed in the initial instructions that they did not really like to fund ballistic grants with this, and, and suggested another, another grant, so I rewrote it for, for this application, uh, and the, the other grant that they proposed is a, is a fifty percent match for the, for the ballistic vest, so I'm going to continue to research and probably make application through the St. Genevieve County Development Fund for the, for the ballistic vests.
Okay. Any other questions, Brad, before we vote?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Beth, second by Teddy, all in favor?
Aye.
All in both. Okay, thank you, Eric. Okay, bill number thirty-nine eighty-five, by title only, please, Pam.
An ordinance limiting taxes for the year two thousand fourteen, first reading.
Okay. Motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Beth. Second.
Second.
Second by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
All in both. Okay. Is it going to...
He didn't make the motion at the second reading of bill number thirty-nine eighty-five.
Second.
Okay, motion by Rick, second by Donnie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in both, okay. We're going to have...
Do we have to do a roll call?
No, I would just prefer a second, now we do the...
Oh, I see.
Second reading, title only, please.
An ordinance limiting taxes for the year two thousand fourteen, second reading.
Okay, motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
That, motion by Beth, second by Joe. Now we do the roll call, please?
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Cabs?
Joe.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Oh, yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero nos. Bill number thirty-nine eighty-five now becomes ordinance thirty-nine twenty-four.
Okay, thank you. Now we have bill number thirty-nine eighty...
Do we have a, do we still have a call?
Yes, we have six.
Accountant.
Yeah, I'll check on that, too.
Just making sure.
We can give out a five, but we'd rather have full board, of course. Okay, this is, uh, bill number thirty-nine eighty-six, by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the city of St. Genevieve fiscal year two thousand fourteen budget relating to the debt service fund budget number fifty, first reading.
And this is, what, what do you call this? Housekeeping? I pretty much forgot to do it, so, uh, motion, move to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion by Joe, second by Donnie, all in favor?
Aye.
All in both. Do we need to...
We have to do this again.
Do we have to do these?
No.
Okay, we can get them next, finish them up next meeting.
No, I need a second reading.
Uh, bill number thirty-nine eighty-seven, by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the city of St. Genevieve fiscal year two thousand fourteen budget relating to the general fund budget legislative number ten, first reading.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Motion by Beth?
Second.
Second, second by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
All in both. Bill number thirty-nine eighty-eight, by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the city of St. Genevieve fiscal year two thousand fourteen budget relating to the government grant fund budget number nineteen, first reading.
Motion by Teddy?
Second.
Second by Donnie, all in favor?
Aye.
All in both. Okay, thank you. Bill number thirty-nine eighty-nine, by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a memorandum of agreement with Alliance Water Resources Incorporated, a Missouri corporation, to modify the initial professional service agreement dated August twelfth, two thousand ten, first reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Tom, second by Joe, all in favor?
This was a seven-year, uh, seven-year?
Yes. It's only went through at the beginning in our work session, yes.
Do we need this right away, or?
No.
Okay. Okay, now we're on the bill number thirty-nine ninety, by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing the operation of other power-driven mobility devices to include golf carts, motorized wheelchairs, and certain utility task vehicles within the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, and regulating the operator and passenger of motorized bicycles, forty-nine CC and below motor scooters, first reading.
Move to approve with one change.
Discussion. Well, we can do a second. You can do the motion.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to make the change on page three, uh, section four, to add in there that all passengers, including drivers, shall be expanded by a seat belt while vehicles in motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Teddy with the change on the ordinance, I mean, on the bill. Do we have a second?
I think we need to look at this a little closer.
We need a second first.
I...
So we can have a discussion.
It may end right here.
Well, I don't want it to end completely, but I think changes, I think some changes need to be made. I think the scooter thing needs to be separated.
Well, I think, can't we do, they can start with a whole new ordinance.
Start over again, they can pass it on first reading and discuss it, and consider it on second reading, the changes on second reading, but, but before you have a discussion, you've got to have a second.
Right.
Okay, second, so we can talk about it.
We got a first and a second, by Teddy, and then by Beth, okay?
You know, I, I would like to have a discussion with the police chief about how he feels about the UTVs not being able to go over twenty miles an hour in a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit.
Now, police chief, we did review this.
He reviewed all this, and he's okay with all of it?
I got his input.
Okay.
Did you have comments?
If you got some questions, go on.
Chief Bennett?
Again, I, I did review this, and I, I, you know, looked for errors, there were some concerns that I, that I discussed with, with Teddy or with all of them, or else. I, I still think that it should be a full licensed driver at eighteen, uh, for this. The, the UTVs, you know, i- it would be difficult to find a UTV that's governed by the manufacturer at twenty, uh, however, I, I don't know if we could amend ours to say, uh, governed even, even, you know, by private source, you know, as long as it's governed where the city thinks it should be, I think that'd be fine, but, uh, in some of the, some of the research that I've done, you know, there's, there's a few, like a Kubota, that, that come from the factory, governed at twenty, I think everything else does about thirty or, or more.
Why twenty?
I don't know.
Because of federal regulation.
On a, on a UTV?
Before, but a slow-moving vehicle is treated differently by federal government as standard twenty.
I, I think, I, I certainly applaud the scooter portion of this and, and requiring an helmet for, for passengers, I think that's a great idea. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of it that I, that I am in favor of, just again, my, my own personal preference and, and, I think, safety-wise, I, I still think that the, the full licensed driver would be more responsible than somebody with an intermediate license or a permanent.
I agree with Chief Bennett that, um, the scooter portion is very important, but I think that we are, we have brought together too much under one, um, ordinance. I think the scooter portion should be separated out and reviewed specifically. Uh, I, I don't like the idea of golf carts and, and relaxing the standards for golf carts. I don't like the idea of side-by-side UTVs on the city streets. Um, I, obviously, I mean, as everybody would be in favor of people with disabilities to have mobility, but I'm sorry, I just can't see how side-by-side UTVs and golf carts make, uh, accessibility better for people with disabilities. I think that, uh, we have, we discussed this in our work session, and, uh, I think that many people have some varying opinions, but I don't want to see the city of St. Genevieve overwhelmed with people driving, uh, side-by-side UTVs on our city streets. And, uh, there are several specific points in this bill that I disagree with, uh, and there's several that I do agree with, I think there should be, that there's too much going on here to pass this.
The original golf cart ordinance was passed before I was a member of the board?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I, I think it's been a couple of years.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's well before I was...
It was passed, it was before the three, who are newest members were...
So, I'm probably not as familiar with that as I should be to look at this, and I, I overall, I, like I said before, I like seeing golf carts on the streets downtown. I think it's great, and I think people are saving gas, they're using electric golf carts, and, you know, it's good for the environment, and I'm, the safety issues are what I'm really concerned with here, and I think I need a little more time to look at some of this, but...
Well, one of Tom's concerns is that he thinks that we're going to be overrun with the UTVs.
I don't think that's going to be...
You know, he had his golf cart ordinance for a couple of years, Tom, and how many golf carts have you seen?
I think it's totally different when, uh, expand that to, to, uh, side-by-side UTVs. And the safety issue, um, the current ordinance is the state allows a golf cart to cross a state highway, is that correct? And this ordinance would say that a golf cart could travel up a state highway in city limits, and as much truck traffic as we have on Highway sixty-one, and we start throwing golf carts in there with these drivers getting paid by the load, they're trying to get where they're going, uh, they already, uh, push the limit, push the envelope a little bit. I just don't see anything good coming from this, a- and I think that, again, to say that I would be against Americans with disabilities is a ridiculous statement, uh, and I don't think anybody in this room would be against that, but I don't, I see more cons than pros to, to this ordinance as written. I think that we should take another look at it, separate it out a little bit, polish it up, and, and look at it again, but we're about to vote on it, so, you know, we'll see how it goes.
I know the state, since, since we approved our golf cart ordinance a couple of years ago, the state amended their UTV laws that, that would actually enable UTVs to, to travel on any, any road, interstate US highway, within so many miles of, of the, the residence, you know, which made it very hard to track, especially since you're not registering the vehicle. However, uh, we decided at that time, at least we talked about it in the committee, at the, the possibility of expanding ours, and, and at that time, the, the committee was not in favor of expanding that at that time to include UTVs. Uh, I know that there are, are certainly, uh, applications where it would be beneficial, and I know, I know several people who have expressed an interest in being able to drive a UTV in, in place of a, in place of a truck. Again, that's not a, ADA...
One of the examples I brought up in our work session, my three-quarter-ten Ford pickup truck was eighty-eight hundred pounds, a twenty mile an hour impact with a golf cart.
And that, that's been my contention the, the entire time, I mean, we haven't had any incidents with, with vehicle versus golf cart since we've, since we've implemented it. However, they have been restricted from the thirty-five mile an hour and thirty mile an hour, uh, sections of town. Uh, we did have an incident recently with a, with a single-vehicle golf cart that appeared to be more serious than it actually...
A little blown, didn't it?
Right. Uh, but it was another example of an unlicensed driver, uh, driving that, and, and certainly the, the mindset that goes into adolescent drivers, I, I think factors into that, and not necessarily that accident in particular, but, but just the overall, I mean, I drove like a knucklehead when I first got my license, and I would expect other, other kids probably would too, so, uh, that, that's my, my biggest concern with it is, is opening up to any, any unlicensed driver or, or intermediate licensed driver. You know, the, the UTVs, my, my fear at the time was, was some of those have a lot more aggressive tires, especially with our microseal that we just did downtown, has the potential to chew up, you know, uh, the weight may, may certainly help with that some, I mean, they're considerably lighter than a car, uh, but maybe we could look at, I, I, it sounds like this just needs to be another work session.
On the flip side of the safety thing, to go to the other side of it, when I get on a bike and I travel from my house to Alco on a bicycle, I mean, I'm assuming a certain risk, or if I want to walk along Highway thirty-two, I'm assuming a certain risk, and I know that when I get on my bicycle, and the people that get in that golf cart should know that they're assuming a certain risk by doing it. I mean, they're going to be adults, they're going to be fully aware of that, what could happen between the golf cart and an eighty-eight hundred pound truck?
And I, I don't recall on the ordinance, and I apologize, I should have, I should have brought a copy with me, but, does it call for insurance on, on golf carts and UTVs and then...
Yes, it does. Joe brought that up, and it's in there.
Page three, number nine.
Okay.
It should have, you know, some...
Very, very, there needs to be, be some insurance, although this could provide...
Yeah, the way it's worded, as far as UTV, that only UTVs designed not to exceed twenty mile an hour, maybe out there, but, uh, you know, but then again, I don't know, how many are there going to be?
I don't know, one's too many. That's just, I mean...
And that's your personal opinion?
And that's all it is.
You don't want any of it?
No. I want the, I want restrictions on scooters and helmets and not easy-to-watch devices, I think that is necessary and needed.
It should be.
It's real safety that affects people, um, but I just, I don't want to add more hazards to our city streets. Um, and I agree, Beth made a very good point, that people that want to drive golf carts, they're adults, they're responsible, unless they're...
Not adults?
Not adults, and they're not responsible, and that just adds another hazard to every other driver out there. Um, it just, uh, I just, I just can't come to the, the value of the, uh, to the citizens of, of town. Uh, we talked about... the citizens of, of town. We talked about tourism. If somebody came to the board and, you know, my name's John Smith and I'm, I'm going to buy or rent this building and I want to get six golf carts and I want to run them from these hours on these days on these streets to the tourist attractions and swirks homes, I would probably be very in favor of that. Because it takes away my biggest concerns about impacts with, at a higher speed. I would probably, but I want to see a lot more, I want to see a little white strobe light, I want to see a big old flag, I want to see a lot of safety precautions on that. And I want to see only licensed drivers driving them. But if, if somebody wanted to do that, I would be in favor of that. But to think that, well, maybe somebody will because we made an ordinance on it, I'm not, I'm not down with that. I want, if you want to propose that to somebody out there, come and propose it and I'm probably going to be in favor of it. But just, just to use that as, as part of the reasoning to get this passed, not enough for me.
Okay, you said that you're not against the American Disability Act.
Who is? Come on, realize.
It encourages access for citizens with physical limitations to all city resources to include golf carts, motorized wheelchairs, and utility vehicles.
This particular ordinance, I'm sorry, Ted, I mean, wrong.
To, to help accomplish this access for growing population individuals, we are submitting this. Now, what do you recommend for the, how are these people going to get to different places in this city?
If this ordinance was written differently and people hit with however the ADA says these are the requirements to, to be assessed as a person with disabilities, and if the ordinance is written to specifically help them, I'd be okay with that. We, we should figure out how to do that. But it's not written like that. It's wide open. It means anybody can, can use these vehicles. So it's, it's not apples to apples.
All of our citizens.
Yeah, I don't, and, but just the argument that this is for the disabled, that doesn't work for me. Because it's not only for the disabled, it's for anybody.
Yes, it is.
And it's, and, you know, it's, it was brought up earlier, there's some pork in this. And there's, there's just some things that I think if it was separated out a couple ways, I'd probably be pretty okay with it. But to have it all at once in one ordinance, I, I just, I don't see the value. I'm ready to vote whenever anybody else is all stop talking.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Pete.
I just, I just think these people with these motorized scooters, they're not capable of driving a golf cart. You know, they do good on their motorized scooter that's going ten miles an hour or whatever.
Just because we're doing this doesn't mean they're gonna, everybody's gonna go out all of a sudden and buy a golf cart now.
I don't think so either.
You know.
But it doesn't prevent from everybody. I mean, it's just, I think we just need to separate it out and, and look at it in different pieces than all in one ordinance that, that because I like a lot of it, but I don't like some of it, do I, do I vote no? Like I don't want kids to have to wear helmets? Of course I don't want kids to wear helmets. If I vote no, do I not want people with disabilities to have mobility? Well, that's ridiculous. Everybody wants people that have disabilities to have mobility. But there's too much all in one spot for me.
You know, Tom, it's going to be the same. If you vote, you know, if you say we're a person with disabilities, allow them, aren't they going to be on the street out there going twenty miles an hour, going to a store or something?
It's going to be a limited number. The hazard, the hazard will be smaller because it's a limited number.
Okay, yeah.
In general, people with a disability already have permission to use such devices anyways. I mean, they don't even know.
They're getting, they're getting counseling from a variety of agencies and how to.
Things like that.
Well, I mean, they don't need a city ordinance to give them that, I mean, if our city ordinance doesn't apply it.
Ted, isn't, isn't a motorized wheelchair considered a pedestrian?
I'm not sure because it, it's listed under.
Which ones they can go in.
Other motor devices. It's listed as a motor device. So I don't know.
We don't know what the ADA.
As far as, I just know it's a motorized wheelchair that's under this.
Let's, let's go ahead.
Let's, I just want to tell you and think about this. You got two board members missing here. I don't know if you want to wait for another meeting?
I, I mean, I don't know.
I know.
Is a disability at this point to table and work on it a little more and come back?
Person who drew would have to draw the motion.
Okay, I withdraw my second.
No, you draw, did you draw your motion?
Beth drew her second.
We got a first and a second, let's vote on it. If you don't want it, that's fine.
Well, she drew her second, she said.
Well, Kenton.
Yep, she did.
Okay.
I, I think we need to work on it. And I'm afraid right now it's going to be voted no. And then, I don't, I don't want that to happen. I don't want it to die.
But it needs to be tweaked or refined.
Right. But I'm afraid if we vote on it right now and you don't withdraw your first, it's going to die and that's it. I want to work on it and come back with something different. So that's why I want to table it.
I, I agree with that, that it's important and needs.
Well, it'd be completely different if it comes back, so it don't matter anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, regardless, this is what's before us, this is what we're approving or disapproving. And he's going to go back to the drawing board if it doesn't go through, so.
And we can come back with something.
Either way, we'll be able to reevaluate.
It's not like we can never address it. Again, it'll just be a different bill number or whatever they are. Yeah, it'll be a different bill number, I guess, wouldn't it? Yeah, so that'd be.
It dies for like a second, you got to start.
Okay, well then I'll reinstate my second.
Right.
Redo my second. Read.
Of course you don't.
Do-over? Do-over?
You want to.
I mean, I.
Well, it don't matter.
I, I guess.
You had to have the second in order for us to discuss it so that you can't, you can't really take it back now because we already went through the discussion period.
No take backs?
So now it's just.
We don't have our counselor here, so.
Well, I mean, we had to have the second in order to discuss, and now that we already discussed, you can't really rescind.
Well, we discussed.
Let's do something.
Yeah, so.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. It died anyway.
Let's work on it.
Back to you.
Work on it.
You can do it.
It doesn't need to go away, it needs to be worked on.
Well, if this needs somebody to help me figuring out what we're going to do, so.
I'll help you.
Tom, I don't know.
I'm not nearly as knowledgeable about these things as you are, but I'll help you.
You want to make sure Beth knows of your concerns?
I think I mean, my concern is pretty clear for two hours.
Well, I mean, of course, maybe.
My biggest concern is very clear against UTVs, golf carts or anything. So, I mean, that's what you said.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Right. So, my biggest concern is clear.
But I'm also concerned that we do take action on the scooter issues and, and under, and drivers of, operators of less than eighteen years of age and implying, and cut some restrictions on that.
Okay, we already have an ordinance for that. So all you got to do is revise the ordinance.
Well, Teddy, you want to, you want to move this? It's up to you to, you know, move it.
Okay. I think we got that taken care of. All right, now we've got the public participation. Any folks in the audience like to address the board? Thanks. Mr. Weiner?
Acting Mayor, I guess you might say, or whatever you want to call him, and our administrator that wasn't here at the last meeting, and members of the board. My name is Paul Weiner, I live at eleven fifty-eight Valley Spring Trail. I'm not going to bring up any issues. Oh, yes, I am. I have one thing to say. I've got no problem, I, I do have a handicap, flat card on my car. But I don't want to run into the back end of a golf course going twenty miles an hour or ten in a thirty-five mile an hour speed zone. Now, I've got no problem if you got it inside the city on the streets, but when you get on a state-maintained road or the highway, I don't want to see them on there. I wouldn't want to drive one on them. Now, I will a motorcycle, I will a scooter, but not a golf cart. Hey, I thank you for your time. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. Anyone else? Mr. Brown?
Hello, I'm Bob Brownie at four ninety-eight Merchant. And I'd like to thank everybody for helping me with the problem with the kids. Excuse me. They sighted three kids and took one into custody. And I guess these kids gave more names of other kids. I'm going to court next week for the one that spit in my face. So there's something being done. But something we cannot forget and make this mistake again. This problem started with two kids years ago. That was unruly. Parents didn't care what they did. And they got away with everything. They got more of their buddies. And then when they moved out of the area, their buddies picked off where they left off. And we can't make this mistake again by letting kids get away with everything. And I think that we all found out a lot of our problem is at the probation department. She just wasn't following all these kids. Just talking to them, you know, and that was the biggest problem. But, you know, we will see how it goes, but, I mean, and then I was told by a few people, I don't know if it's true or not, but since these kids are sighted, vandalism has almost stopped. I mean, I don't, is that true?
I reported that the park superintendent said that vandalism at the public restaurants was down.
Well, no, other people too has told me that there's, had vandalism in their neighborhoods that, that prior had the vandalism. And has anybody given any more thought on between Market and Jefferson, making Fifth Street one way? Has anybody given any more thought?
We researched it. It is definitely no parking on, on the west side of the street. However, I mean, it, it is a problem even with parking on the east side of the street, getting too much traffic through there. I know that we proposed it sometime back and it kind of died on fine, but, you know, I can certainly write something up and see if the board is in favor of, you know, the, the biggest problem is our school buses getting to and coming from school, you know, and if we restrict it to one way, I'm not a huge fan of changing that direction, depending on the time of day. I think that gets confusing and dangerous for people. So it's, it's really going to eliminate that thoroughfare either to school or away from school. So both, I mean, that's the, the issues that we have. I'm certainly willing to, to entertain making it a one way, but I, I don't feel that changing the direction will be, will be beneficial.
Okay, the problem with making it, no parking on the cemetery side, you, in the summertime, sometimes there's two busloads of, they bring tourists in there, and no park on that side of the street. And if there was no parking there, the people are not going to stop. And I mean, is there a one way, I mean, to make it one way per, all day? Because like you said, if you make it between this and, people are not going to see that. You're going to have head-on closures up there.
I, I guess, if I can ask, do you have a preference on which way would be more beneficial? Buses getting to school or buses getting away from school?
Well, we could do it, we'd go one way in the morning and the other way in the afternoon. How's that?
Yeah, but, yeah, you know that, but nobody else will.
Is there a better street the buses?
Right.
Is there a better street the buses can utilize than that street?
That's been, and, and we've got the two four-way stops now, and that's helped, that's helped a lot, ain't it, from Fifth, from Market on up to Washington?
Yeah, come here.
I mean, as far as traffic flow, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Because it's terrible there. I mean, it, just a matter of time, right there at the crest of Fifth, I guarantee it, there's going to be a head-on closure.
The majority of school buses are probably going out of Eighth Street on the way out of school.
Ninth.
Ninth.
You'd ninth going out.
So I'll, I'll get with you tomorrow and we will look at, at the bus count, vote to and from and try to have some ready next meeting.
All righty, all right, well, thank you all.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Any gentlemen in front row like to address the board? Where are we at here?
Now we got the other business, the approval of the street closure from Joe Roser, has he explained it to us. And Dave brought it up. I think if there is, you know, a positive vote on this, we probably need to talk to the county also.
Take responsibility for that.
Well, I mean, half of it's ours, half of it's theirs, so we still have to make.
It's their responsibility to figure that out.
Yeah.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Tom, second by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Dave, the oral Board of Alderman Communication, I think we, we did a lot of that recently. I think, is there any need for a closed session?
May we approve our move during the term?
Second.
Motion by Joe, second by Donnie, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, we're.
Hoping that the person had to leave.